All right. It's called order our reorganization meeting for Monday, January 10.
Commissioner Harris. Commissioner Dunn.
Here.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Here.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yeah.
Chair Waymire.
Present. I pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right, notification today. Now, before I pray, I just wanted to say thanks to you as commissioners. Derek, as our counselor and administrator, thank you. And for all of our staff, HR and everybody for this last year. I know this is a reorganization meeting, but I personally want to say thank you to all, everybody and all the staff and all the extra work that's gone into not only your, the normal activities of the county, but also with COVID, that extra bit that has to be done. And, you know, I was sorry to lose Alan. I know he'll be on a, on a, on his cord with Tom, but, but, you know, to pull all that together, it's just been watching, watching that process. And I know that extra stuff has gone into that. So I say thank you to everybody in the county for just stepping up. I mean, it's what we do, but still, it's, that's the omen's job that you, that's been done. So thank you. Thank you for all you do for our county. Let's pray. Lord, I pray that as we reorganize our county commission for 2022, wow, that you could continue to bring them wisdom and guidance as decisions are made for our county and as things move forward, as we grow, as we see things happen in the new year. And we're just grateful for all that you've done for us in the past, but we're anticipating and excited about what we can do in the future for the citizens of Franklin County and even beyond. We're thankful for that. We pray for those who have been sick and those who are healing through all kinds of things, including COVID. Well, I pray for Rod today, that you would touch him, be with him and his wife and his family through this time and then help him to heal and get back on his feet and get back to doing the things that he loves. Just leave him in your hands. We're grateful for that. We continue to pray for our state, our county, and our, our federal governments and all that they're doing. Lord, just, just lay your hand on all that's going on. Again, I thank you for the people that we have in our county that are taking care of us, watching over us, protecting us, and I'm grateful for that. And Lord, I pray that each of us would remember to pray for them and just lift them up. And we ask in Christ's name, amen. Thank you. All right, this is the part of the meeting where we adjourn the current commission, brush up on our Latin, and what is that? Commission sindai? I think everybody's pronounced it different every year. We'll go with that this year. And we just declare that, right? We don't, yeah, and reconvene. We have a roll call in here. I don't think we've ever done that before. Looks like all commissioners are present, exception to Commissioner Harris. Hopefully that suffices. And we'll move down to selecting a chairperson for the ensuing year under items of business.
I would point out Chair Waymire, that, that this year, instead of making just a quick motion and doing it that way, that, that we make nominations and have a discussion about who the next chair should be, and that's based on feedback from last year's reorg meeting.
All right.
I got quite anybody interested in taking the position?
After considerable thought, I'm gonna put my name in the hat to be the chair for next year. I'm not making a motion, I'm just gonna put it out there that I'd be willing to serve as chairman of the commission.
If that's the case, I'll nominate Roy.
Your motion?
I'd like, I'd like to hear any further discussion before those are received.
Okay. Well, I'd be out. I've done it two years.
I got way more than I need to do.
Okay.
I'm willing, but I would also be glad to have Roy as the chair. So either way.
How many years you been, been here, Roy?
I started in 2004. I was chair in 2006 or '07. I can't remember now, sure. I lost election in 2008, and then I was re-elected in 2012. And this will be my fourth term. I'm in the, will be the second year of the fourth term this year.
How many times have you been chair? Just once?
One time, yeah.
Oh, wow, wow.
Eighteen years since you.
Yeah. But anyway, I felt like Colt's been chair now for three years in a row, and I think, two years in a row, and I think was Steve Harris was before.
Rick was.
Rick, yeah, Rick did.
Rick Howard was two years. I think Steve Harris was, what, two years before that?
Yep.
No, Reno was, Randall Reno was the year before.
Oh, that's all right. Okay. Yeah, time flies. You didn't get it right, so. I think Colt's done a good, a real good job the last couple of years. I think, I think the change would be give him a break from doing it. That's kind of why I put my name in the, in the, out there.
Sure. All right. On, any other discussion?
I didn't know if I, I just, you know, let somebody else.
Yep. Understand. Oh, your motion stand?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I don't think we have a motion yet. You nominated.
I nominated, yeah.
But now we need to have a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion now.
All right. I'll second your motion then.
Commissioner Dunn.
Upstand.
Commissioner Dickinson.
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Chair Waymire.
Yes.
All yours, Roy.
Okay, well, thank you all for supporting me, for being the chair. I think our next selection will be for vice chair. I think we'll have the same kind of discussion about the vice chair, too. We kind of changed before. We used to have the chair would be a member of the Economic Development Board, and the vice chair would be the representative on the Chamber of Commerce. And we kind of mixed that up. And so I'll, I'll be open to anybody who wanted to discuss the vice chairman position and whether we want to go back to that format. I don't think it's necessary that the vice chairman has to be on the, on the Chamber of Commerce Board, too. I'll second that.
Last, last year I was not on the.
I know, that's, that's what I was talking about. Yeah, we did that forever, that, that kind of deal. So then we changed last year because I think Rod was representative on that board. Okay, we have a motion, the board to nominate Ian Dickinson as vice chair. Your second?
I made the mo, oh, I'll take it.
Was it motion? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll second.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll take a vote.
Okay, Commissioner Dickinson. Commissioner Stottlemyre.
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn.
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire.
Yes.
Ian Dickinson will be the vice chair. And now we looked at the dates of the meeting. We've been doing the same format for quite some time. It's worked real good for us. Regular meeting once a week on Wednesday morning at 8:30, and our study sessions every other Monday at 8:30. Occasionally, we do have an evening meeting if it's so warranted, and we could always do that any time of the year. So would anybody like to discuss our meetings or changing our meetings or remain the same?
I think it's worked out just fine. Whether we did it '21.
I agree.
I, I agree, too. I think it's worked out just fine. Do we need a motion? We need a, okay.
If we're gonna leave it the same, you can, no motions needed?
Okay, the next one's the fun part. Who represents who on the, our partners in the community? Right now, I represent the East Central Kansas area and ON aging and ECAN, the first two. Didn't know if anybody else would like to be on either one of those boards.
I wouldn't mind being on, but I hate, how do we do this when we have the one that's not here? And I don't know.
Yeah.
Do we divide them all into four and then figure, and then maybe?
Yeah, that's, that's actually what I would do today, yeah.
You thinking? I was thinking we'd still kind of cut them in, and then we can cover his meetings as we need them, and he's gonna be backing at it, so.
You don't really know what he wants to do, though, or?
I guess my, and, and we can get to that, but on these first two, like, the chair is normally on the FCDC board, so keep that in mind, Roy, in terms of.
If that's kind of what I was thinking, I'd, I'd be a representative on the FCDC board, and.
I've never been on aging. That's one I've never been on. I wouldn't mind learning about that.
They meet right now quarterly down there at Terry, our Aging Center, ON aging on Second Street there. So.
Are you thinking about giving up both of those, then? Because I wouldn't.
I'll be, I'll be willing to stay on ECAN board unless somebody else wants to do ECAN.
So Colt for aging?
Elizabeth Layton Center.
So that one's one that I'm on. It's actually, we don't appoint to that board. I was selected on a personal, you know what I mean, basis or whatever. It's up on there as an individual, not as a board appointee. So I'd be willing to keep doing it.
Okay. Colt, continue doing that. Kansas Workforce Development Board.
Roy, you passed over the Visitor Center. So the Franklin County Visitor Center Board.
We want to keep Mr. Harris in mind when we're going through here, too. I know we don't want to commit to something that he doesn't want to do, but we still want to keep him.
Yeah.
I don't know what he served on.
Is Rod on your board right now, Casey? Why don't we keep, that's not a board that, that convenes that often. I would recommend we keep Rod on there for the time being, and I can reach out to him. If something changes, then we can always appoint.
Oh, yeah, you can always reappoint.
Okay, we'll keep Rod on the Visitor Center Board. Okay, Kansas Workforce Development Board?
I believe in their bylaws, they, they want it to be a, the chairperson.
Yeah, I think that's.
What's chairman for that, too? Okay.
That's another board that doesn't meet that often, but that, I believe that is the case, that they request the chair, so.
I'm, I'm fine with being on that board, too.
There have been phone Zoom meetings, so you don't have to go to Topeka every time, lately, so.
Okay.
I can take three of them up if you'd like. I'd stick, like to continue on the Lake Region Solid Waste Authority and the Lake Region RCND and the Wellsville Chamber.
Anybody have any problems with Don standing on those? I don't. Okay, they're yours, Don. Neighborhood revitalization program?
That has been me, and that's no problem. It's, we haven't even been, been meeting. We just send it to us by email whenever it happens, so.
All righty.
Chamber Board, Ian, would you like to?
I will do the Chamber Board, yeah.
I'll do the FCDC, Ransom Memorial Hospital Board. You do that, Colt?
We haven't for the last couple of years, been.
Haven't had a meeting.
They're not, well, we haven't been sending people to it. We haven't, since they're not charged of operations anymore. Operations lies with the Advent, the Adventist group, so we haven't been. And it conflicts, for me, it conflicts with Elizabeth Layton Center, the same days, the same time, or within a half an hour of each other, so.
Okay. I guess we could just leave it open, and if they have a board, if they have a meeting, then somebody could go to it.
They do meet, but it's kind of, the sole purpose of that board is to dispense the tax dollars that are levied just for the hospital, so there's not a lot of surprises
Okay, we'll just go on. Franklin County Food Policy Council?
That, that is me, and I don't mind going to it. I mean, I like going to, but the timing is kind of wrong. It's on the day I have grandsons every Monday. But right now, they're meeting by Zoom and in person, so you have a choice? I don't know.
Do they meet regular? I'm not familiar with when they meet.
They meet on the first Monday at 4:00.
This was a new one to me. I know, I know Ian was a representative there.
I think I've been on for the last couple of years, and you were on before that. I don't know if that would be something that.
I don't know if that's some Rod being interested in or not, where they only meet once a month.
Yeah, once a month.
They only meet once a month. I don't know, I ain't gonna say that. I already got what I, I'm full board on mine.
Hey, I've, I've got Don on three boards as of now. I've got Roy on three boards as of now. I've got Ian and Colt on two boards as of now, and, and Rod on one, which I, we could, you know, if we want to pencil someone in for the ransom board, again, just to attach a name to it, I think we could probably attach Commissioner Harris. I don't think there's much of an obligation, so I would propose that we do that. And then there's Food Policy Council and Prairie Paws. If you want to attach Rod's name, but I don't know that, that we want to load Rod up when we don't know for sure when, when he's gonna be back.
How often does that Prairie Paws? Not very often.
It's once a month. It's like a.
Do they do it once a month?
Once a month.
Okay.
It's just the finance, the finance committee. And I, so I've done both of those last ones.
Well, we could put Rod on, and then they get a meeting coming up, then somebody else could fill in.
I feel like, are you willing to serve? I guess between you and Colt, you each only have two, and everyone, except for Rod, you, Colt and Rod now have two boards, Roy and Don have three. If there's interest in, in keeping it kind of similar, then I would ask that, or I guess, Ian, you take one, Colt, you take one. If that doesn't matter to you guys, then any of you jump on any of these, but that's just numbers-wise, that's where we're at.
Rod's on Prairie Paws now, Eddie.
I am.
Oh, you are, sorry.
Are you willing to stay on either of these, Ian?
I, I would stay on either, on both of them, but like I said, that's just, the one is just kind of a bad time, but.
And that's food policy?
So if I was gonna stay on one that's most beneficial or easiest for me would be the Prairie Paws.
Okay, Colt, are you willing to do Food Policy Council?
I'm not interested in the Food Policy Council. I mean, not interested, I'm not, not wanting to, I was on it before.
You could put it, put it as Rod, and I'll stay on it, and then if he doesn't want it, I'll just do it. Does that make sense? Does that work?
Okay.
Unless somebody else wants it.
Okay, I think we got them all filled now.
Can I read these back to all of you, and then somebody make a motion to approve? Would you be okay with that, Roy?
Yeah, I'd be fine.
Okay. So East Central Kansas Area Agency on Aging, I have Colt. ECAN, I have Roy. Elizabeth Layton, I have Colt. Visitor Center, I have Rod. Workforce Development, I have Roy. Lake Region Solid Waste, I have Don. Neighborhood Revitalization, I have Ian. Ottawa Chamber, I have Ian. FCDC is Roy. Ransom is Rod. RCND is Don. Wellsville Chamber is Don. Franklin County Food Policy Council is Rod, and Prairie Paws is Ian. If that sounds like what we agreed to, then we would just need a motion.
That sounds right. Now, I entertain a motion to approve those assignments.
The RMH one's the only one. I don't know if Rod'd be comfortable on there since his wife's been on that organization, if he wanted to put my name on. Like I say, it conflicts, but I can.
Okay, well.
Put him in a bad position, is either.
I, I could be, just put my name on there if they don't, if they meet or they don't. I don't care. I mean, you say they don't meet very often, or they don't, or?
I think they still have roughly monthly meetings. I just don't think they do much business, so, yeah, I think it would probably be better if one of you, either Colt or Ian, put your name on there, but you two can decide amongst yourselves who would rather do it.
I wouldn't mind doing it.
Okay. Colt, are you fine with Ian being?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So the only substitution would be we're going to put Ian on Ransom Memorials Board, and everything else would remain the same.
Okay, with those changes, I'll entertain a motion to approve those assignments.
I was gonna approve.
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, we'll vote on it.
Okay, Commissioner Stottlemyre? Commissioner Dickinson?
Yeah.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Yes. Now we got to discuss the official county newspaper. I know we only have one newspaper in town, and I think that's what we're kind of stuck with, right? Okay, so. We have the Ottawa Herald. Would anybody care to make a motion?
I need the major changes at the beginning of the year, too. Like, okay.
I mail all my bills to Hutchison now.
Yeah, it is. And, and, and that's, that's something that I think the legislature discusses every single year, is giving local governments the authority to use their own websites, their own social media to do this, but as of now, we, we still can't legally do that, which is frankly a shame, but you're right, Roy. The Ottawa Herald's the only county newspaper we have right now. I mean, technically, we could probably use like the Journal World or something, but I don't, I don't think that would be advisable at this juncture, so.
Goes by circulation, doesn't it? I mean, I, I agree, we, that's all we got, but didn't you say there's a newspaper up in Wellsville or somewhere up there that's?
Baldwin, it's Baldwin-Wellsville.
Yeah.
It's a combination Baldwin-Wellsville.
I was gonna say, if they're popular, they may be starting to rival in circulation, so.
Yeah, it is a combination thing, but it is located in Baldwin, but it's for Baldwin-Wellsville.
Gotcha.
In the future, we may have a choice. I'm not trying to muddy the waters.
And the only thing, and I know we gotta go that way, because I know it's the only, like Janet told me, it's the only thing in town, you know, but it'd be nice if we had a little respect from them to recognize us, you know? I mean, we throw a lot of money their way, and it seems like they come out here a while back when they changed how much more they were gonna do with the public and the community. I ain't seen it. Like, I mean, I know people, I've tried to contact them, and other people try, they don't get back with you, they don't talk to you, you know, like they're invisible. Just send us your, you know, your two or three pages of notifications, and, and we'll send you a bill, and that's about it.
I have a new contact. I have been super responsive. This is just been about.
Well, that's good, that's good to hear. I appreciate that.
I think the papers are starting to have more local news and not just articles from Topeka or whatever.
You have been very responsive.
The only reason I say that, the only reason I say that is because my organization, I take all the other county paper, and I physically see how much they, I don't know if the word is catered, but they do a lot of local stuff, a lot of local stories. It ain't Topeka stories and Great Bend stories and Concordia stories and Kansas City stories, Topeka stories. It's stories in their community. So that's, you know, I know that has nothing to do with what part we do, but it just makes you feel good that, not feel good that they don't do more in their community.
Yeah, that's, that's a concern of mine, is what Don said, plus, they do have legal notices, and they're parents so darn small, you can't even read it, so it's not been very adequately serving the community like they used to be. Old paper was the community and not just two or three pages, so. Anyway, they're the only game in town, so there's no other further discussion. Have a vote that Ottawa Herald be the official county newspaper.
Need a motion for this one, Derek?
Yeah, I would make a motion.
Motion to approve using the Ottawa Herald as the official county newspaper for the ensuing year?
They've got a motion, have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Okay, Deb.
Okay, Commissioner Dickinson?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottlemyre?
Yes.
Commissioner Waymire?
Yes.
Chair Dunn?
Now we took care of our official, official business for today. Is there anything else we need to discuss today?
Just something to, we don't need to have a discussion necessarily, but just to start thinking about is the retreat. We normally have that first part of the year. I think we did it a little later last year, but probably sometime within the next, oh, four to six weeks, I would like to have one, so you all might start thinking about. I think that we can, with how few of us there are, we can meet and space out, kind of like we are here, and do it responsibly, so you might just start giving some thought. When Janet gets back, I'll discuss it with her, and we can propose a couple of dates, but I would say it's looking somewhere, and, and that early to mid-February mark would be ideal for us, so. And that's all I have, Roy.
Seems like our, our COVID information changes week to week.
It does.
But I think the retreat is very helpful to the commission. It has been in the past, and I'd like to, you know, continue having the retreat, so we'll think about that. Have anything else? I'll entertain a motion.
I was gonna just, can I ask one more thing? Because I am on something that's not on this list, and I wonder if we should have it on here, because I don't, it doesn't have to be me every, all the time, and that's the EOC, the emergency.
Oh, is that Ian?
The EOC meeting, the emergency, you know, the.
Emergency operations.
The emergency operation meeting. I've been the representative for, I mean, I kind of got put on, and then, but it's not on here. Anyway, just, just, I was, I was just thinking, yeah, I'm on more things that's on this list, but.
I've got one or one other one I can't think of, but I don't know that it's as commissioner either.
Yeah, but anyway, it just, I just wondered if, it's, it's actually the LEPC, LEPC is the.
Local Emergency Planning Committee, maybe?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they meet four times a year at 2:00 on a Wednesday afternoon, and right now they're back to, I mean, I'll be glad to do it, but I just wondered if we should put it on the list so that every year we actually assign somebody, or, you know? list so that every year we actually assign somebody, or, you know, it's kind of like one of those.
Are you looking to free up your schedule, Eddie? You have a few things. Are you looking to throw it out there for discussion, or you want to keep doing it?
Either one. It really doesn't make any difference. I don't, again, I don't mind doing it, it's, but I'm, but I'm like, okay, I really am on a lot now, so that one, or the Prairie Paws, or something, but anyhow, you know, we've already done it. I think maybe at this point, I was just gonna say, we need to put it on the list.
For next year.
So that when you say you only are on two, I'm actually on four instead of, yeah.
Yeah, we could, we could put that on the list, because it's, probably should have somebody on that.
Okay.
Okay, any other discussion? entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
We're adjourned.